Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I call the regular meeting of the Menifee City Council to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Edgerton.
Here.
Councilmember August.
Here.
Councilmember Leesmeyer.
Here.
Mayor Protem Denver.
Here.
Mayor Mann.
Here.
Thank you.
And for words of inspiration tonight, we have Father Frederick Cole Stalas from Saint Vincent Farrar Church.
In the name of your Father and the Son and Holy Spirit, amen. Almighty and ever-living Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here tonight. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thanks as well for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even so from your boundless and gracious nature. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for mayor, for the various levels of city's officials, and in particular for assembled council. I am asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of welfare and true needs of our people, a kind thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them tonight. Please give an assurance of what would bless you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved seat of Menifee. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Capstone. Mayor Protem Denver, would you lead us in the pledge?
Please join with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the ideal world with liberty and justice for all.
And gentlemen, if you would please join me up front for a presentation this evening.
They're down front for a presentation.
We have a special presentation for a city proclamation tonight, and I would like to invite up retired Elsinore Valley Municipal Water District Director Ben Wick, front and And I would also like to ask that the President of the Quail Valley Environmental Coalition, President of the Board, come up and join us, left of Mr. August, and Roxanne Roundtree from Eastern Municipal Water District, join me up here. So tonight, we have a proclamation recognizing a public servant of many, many years, one who believes deeply in the cause and the things that he's done. Ben and his wife Trudy have been members of the City of Canyon Lake for about 30 years. And Ben served on the Elsinore Valley Municipal Water District for 20 years. And I remember, I'm gonna share a personal story here. Back in March of 2009, if you remember, our very, very first meeting together, when the concept of having a corporation, a nonprofit corporation, to help advance the idea of having, preventing poor quality nutrients and runoff into Canyon Lake come to fruition. And it was myself, Ben Wick, Nancy Horton, Ron Sullivan, Darcy Kenzie from Supervisor Ashley's office at the time, the city manager from Menifee, the city manager from Canyon Lake, and the city attorney for both cities, and a couple of the Canyon Lake POA members. And we met in the POA room above the library. And the whole discussion surrounded about how can we get together and draw attention to the fact that Canyon Lake is a drinking water reservoir and that there are issues with runoff from Salt Creek Channel, Santa Ana watershed, and other agricultural runoffs into the lake and effluents from the Quail Valley area. Those are the four, three or four main issues of contamination for Canyon Lake. And so, over that period of time, we, from that little group, that little working group, we formed a corporation. Some of us got together and we formed Articles of Incorporation through the state of California. We had a business plan, we had bylaws, and then we ultimately, through Eastern Municipal Water District's graces, we met, I think, what was it, every month in the, up in the second floor of EMWD to advance these ideas and to engage in, frankly, lobbying efforts at various levels to bring money and focus to the challenge in Quail Valley. And Ben Wick, as a founding director of the Board of Directors of the Quail Valley Environmental Coalition, was at the ground floor of that effort. And as he heads off to do other things, we wanted to make sure that we recognize him for that effort. And it's my privilege tonight to read and present, on behalf of the entire city council, a proclamation. The City of Menifee proclaims, whereas Ben Wick began working with Quail Valley Environmental Coalition in March of 2009, and has worked continuously to help bring a sewer system to the Quail Valley area. And Ben Wick was a director for the Elsinore Valley Municipal Water District and was able to represent them during this group's work, bring valuable information that was helpful in planning for a future system in the area. And Ben helped create an agreement between Elsinore Valley Municipal Water District and Eastern Municipal Water District to handle sewer effluents, and the event a sewer system was built in Quail Valley to allow it to enter the Canyon Lake sewer system, with potential savings of millions of dollars. And Ben worked with this group tirelessly over the years, including attending all five annual meetings with donated water and his time and attention to see that the system came closer to reality with the addition of the Audie Murphy tract in the area, possibly allowing for a future hookup for the Quail Valley residents to that system. And the city council, the city council of the City of Menifee wishes to thank Ben Wick for his work on this group for over six years to help bring needed infrastructure to the Quail Valley area. On behalf of the entire council, Ben, congratulations and thank you for your effort.[468.84][468.84][applause] And before we turn the mic to you, the President of the Board would like to make a presentation.
Good evening. My name is Janet Anderson, and I'm the President of the Quail Valley Environmental Coalition. Ben Wick came to the first meeting about the sewer system in Quail Valley in April of 2009. He was Director of the Board for Elsinore Valley Municipal Water District. The Santa Ana Watershed Protection Agency was hired with funds paid for by EVMWD, EMWD, the City of Canyon Lake, and the City of Menifee to do a study of strategic questions the community needed answered. In December of 2009, the SAPA report was presented and the formation of QVAC began. Ben served on the QVAC board until his retirement from EVMWD in November 2014. He attended every annual meeting, providing water, and even helping to keep the children busy while the parents were in the meeting. At one point, EVMWD and EMWD came to an historic agreement whereby EVMWD would take the sewer effluent from Quail Valley through its system to save EMWD from having to build a lift station on Getz Road. This was an estimated, it was estimated to save about $7 million. Ben also obtained $5,000 from EMWD, EVMWD.[574.82][574.82][laughter] To help pay for the survey, Quail Valley needed to apply for the Prop 84 Chapter 2 funds for planning and engineering of a sewer system in Quail Valley. The grant received in 2012 was for $1.93 million. With Ben's advocacy for a sewer system in Quail Valley, we might not be making the progress we are making now in Area 9 Phase 1 today. Thank you, Ben, for all you have done to see this project come to fruition.
Thank you very much.[608.66][608.66][applause]
Director Wick, you'll always be Director Wick to me. I don't have a long speech prepared, but on behalf of Director Sullivan, who's up in Sacramento right now discussing the drought, he would like to express his sincere thank you on behalf of Eastern Municipal Water District.[640.16][640.16][applause]
Ben, would you like to say?
Well, a project like this does not happen overnight. And it works very slowly, but it is moving forward. It will happen, there's no question about it. Unfortunately, it's coming along much slower than I anticipated, but a project like this will be slow. The planning is there and so on. It will be very expensive, but it's going to get done, that's for sure. And I'm glad I was part of it.[670.00][670.00][applause]
Thank you very much. Thank you so much for your service.
[inaudible]
Thank you all very much for recognizing an outstanding servant. Thanks, Ben, for everything that you've done, not only for your city and the Elsinore Valley Water District, but for the region as a whole and for your groundbreaking effort on the Environmental Coalition. Thank you very much, sir, for being here, and thank you, Trudy, for being there to help him, back him up. Okay, council, on to approval of the meeting minutes of April 15th. Are there any changes to the minutes from that meeting?
Move approval.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any objection? Those minutes are approved. Madam Clerk, are there any modifications to the agenda tonight?
No, sir, as posted.
Thank you. Then the agenda is approved. On to public comment time. Would you please call the first speaker?
I will. William Bill Wright.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. These are some thoughts in response to the proposal to place a motto of the United States on Menifee City Hall. I urge the council to use our motto, "E Pluribus Urin," meaning "Out of many one." The founders of the United States and founders of the Constitution recognize that not only were they creating a new kind of nation out of 13 colonies, but also a nation of many people from diverse religious and ethnic backgrounds. They wanted the people to unite, to defend a new nation and its liberating constitution. Their wisdom is based on their deep study of European ancient and world history that caused them to fear to tread in the direction of an established church and religion. However, in the 1940s and 50s after World War I and during the Cold War, Congress and two presidents were pressured and persuaded to tread towards religious establishment by inserting "under God" in the Pledge of Allegiance and enacting "In God We Trust" as the national motto. Now it seems Menifee City Council may consider rushing in to place this motto on our city hall. Questions arise: which God? Who's God? What means? Whose Bible or holy book? Whose version or interpretation? Who will impose this? How? What tests of acceptance and belief? What punishments for deviation from official dogma? All these questions were in the minds of the founders and founders and why they included the concept of established, of new establishment of religion, new religious test for public officials and holders, now summarized in the principle of the separation of church and state. They wanted to establish the free exercise of religion and conscience, including freedom from discrimination, coercion, taxation, intimidation, threats, forced conversion, torture, and death. The founders and founders knew the following items of history: Britain and Western Europe had been endured several centuries of civil war and discord involving the Roman Catholic Church and the Protestant Reformationists. European civilization had been split in 1053 between the Eastern Orthodox and the Western Roman Catholic Churches in their great schism. The hard imperial Islam had conquered, subdued, and converted the Middle East, North Africa, Spain, Turkey, Southern Europe, Persia, and India, and better more. Religions were key factors and tools in these historical conflicts, wars, imperialism, and tyranny.
Mr. Wright, that's your time.
Just one more minute, please. We will, when we ever learn the lessons of history, "E Pluribus Urin" unites us, the other divides us.
Mr. Wright, that's your time. Thank you. And I'd also remind the audience, please, for those of you who are engaging in conversation out there in the audience, we can hear you all the way up here. So, the speaker has the floor, you do not. If you'd like to speak, fill in a slip and come up to the microphone. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm giving copies of my talk.
I did give it to them. Lynda Denver. Yes.
Good evening, Mayor Mann and City Councilmen and members of the community. I am Lynda Denver, Treasurer of the Arts Council Menifee, and also the coordinator of an upcoming event sponsored by a partnership between the City of Menifee, Donahue Schreiber Mill Team, which is the owner of Hounty Side Marketplace, and the Arts Council Menifee. Every household in the community has received the Hounty Side Marketplace semi-annual coupon flyer. How many got theirs? All right. Now, you'll notice down at the bottom, there's colorful advertising that you can see right here, and that's advertising the Hounty Side Marketplace. At the showcase, at the showcase for arts in Menifee, we will have not only over 30 artists from our area presenting their visual arts, but we will also have three different stages where talented people from Menifee will be performing. At the Beer Hunter Patio in the center next to Painted Earth, and in the stage near Chipotle, we'll have dancers, singers, magicians, even the literary group from the Sun City Library will be reading a mystery from the radio readers. So that may stir some memories of some of you, and the rest of you will enjoy it, too. So I want to invite everyone to come to the Hounty Side Marketplace just across the street between Beer Hunter and Chipotle on May 16th, a week from this Saturday, from 11:00 in the morning to 4:00 in the afternoon. Come and enjoy the beautiful weather we're sure to have, and enjoy the many talented people that come from our wonderful valley. And City Councilmen, we will be having our opening ceremonies at 11:00 in the stage next to Painted Earth, and so we'd love to have you come and start off the celebration of our fifth annual Menifee Arts Showcase. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, let me say, your time is up. Please sit down. I have wanted to say that for so long, I can't tell you.
I don't see any lights, Mayor Protem Denver.[1179.14][1179.14][laughter]
Thank you, Dr. Denver. Next speaker, please.
Katie Manier.
Gosh, maybe the lights won't come on for me, because I'm a celebrity, too. I'm here every meeting. Anyway, tonight, I'm gonna talk about the topic I've been talking about for several weeks. I'm gonna talk about our city manager and his job history. Took me a long time to get it. I kept getting a bio that was written by somebody else to make you look good for some meeting held somewhere. Finally got your job application after being told you didn't have one, and you were brought in by Mr. Wentz. There was no date on the job application, so who knows when that was filled out? Could have been filled out the day before I got it. Interesting, you worked for a company associated with Cinegro, who delivered the bio solids. So maybe that's why you won't request the records from the county. You know the damage they did to the land here, and now you're allowing all the building that's going on. Wally, you praised him for his job work. Do you have the backbone to ask what this city has for an operating budget? What is average over the last six months of an operating budget? Do you know how many lawsuits there are in this city at the moment? John Watkins admits that there was dumping of sledge back prior to 1991. Then in 91, it was, it was regulated. Rob is aware that these records were not destroyed, as per Attorney Biggs and Kathy Bennett at a meeting. It's on the record. You need to, you need to be fired for covering up facts that harm the public. You should have done your job and filed a suit against the county for the copies on disc. As a city manager who's salary is paid by taxpayers, not the developers, you're committing a crime by not protecting the citizens. You are put on notice that there is no county agency monitoring the sledge effects and complaints that have been filed in this city, and you failed to inform the city that an environmental health agency needs to be established. You never talk about protecting the citizens, but about what steps you need to take to get development passed.
Thank you, Ms. Manier. Next speaker, please.
Vivian Moreno. Good evening, Mayor, council. My name is Vivian Moreno, and I have been off because I was home with the flu for a couple months. But I'm back, and what was very interesting to me as well, I was out sick, the DA and the FBI raided Beaumont, shut the city down. In the newspaper, there was a sign on City Hall that said, "Closed." And that was really interesting to me when they brought up all the information about the consultants. And I believe that one of the blog posts I put in is that I believe that Menifee was a city that was started with the same exact consultants. And I think this is gonna be a very interesting time now that the DA and the FBI are looking into the consultants. And actually, what was also very interesting this week is that the grand jury of Riverside County admonished the county council of Riverside County, the top dog, Mr. Priamos. And that was also in the newspaper. And I was very delighted to see that, because he was also the council of Riverside, and we knew he was corrupt. So now, he is now being admonished with the county council. But I think that we've had in Riverside County this pay-to-play mentality for a very long time. And one of the things that I did want to come here, because I have been speaking with Katie about qualifications of a city manager, a city attorney, a city clerk, because we pay a lot of money for these jobs as taxpayers. When the FBI or the DA comes in, your city has to have people in place that are gonna be, have to be able to make crucial decisions, and they're gonna have to deal with the public and answer very sensitive questions. So, I don't know if you know, the City of Riverside has just hired what they call the rock star city manager. And when they did that, they put his list of qualifications out there for the entire public to see, where he went to college, what he did before. So, so there was transparency. And I think that all the citizens that are, come to these city meetings, that's all they're looking for. They're looking for transparency. They want an honest government. They want a government, you know, I don't want to come here Tuesday night, Wednesday night, Thursday night, I'm in Harupa Valley. I don't want to do that. I want honesty and transparency, so we can all go home. You can do your jobs. We know that you're qualified to do your jobs, and you're gonna take care of us. That is what we hired you for, and that is what you hired your staff for. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Moreno. Next speaker, please.
Lisa Sobek.
Mr. Edgerton, I'm sorry you didn't hear the public speaker, but if the, if the remaining speakers could really speak into the microphones so that Mr. Edgerton can hear remotely as he's called in, it would be helpful so that he can hear the dialogue.
You could hear it through that process? Will that work?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Not directly, just in general about staff.
The FBI?
No, Mr. Edgerton, that was, Ms. Moreno was speaking about the issue in the City of Beaumont related to the FBI and a raid that had happened earlier in the month. So, that's what she was speaking about.
All right, I'll, I'll, yeah, I want to talk to somebody about this later. This sounds silly.
We'll, we'll definitely get back to you, and you can hear it online tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Edgerton.
Ms. Sobek, please proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Mann and council members who are here, and Councilmember Edgerton, who's on by the phone. I'm here tonight to make a report for those council members who were unable to attend 2015 Menifee Better Together. Menifee Better Together is a neighborhood revitalization partnership between the City of Menifee, Habitat for Humanity Inland Valley, the Menifee Interfaith and Community Service Council, and many local businesses. The partnership was formed in 2013 to serve the communities of the City of Menifee by hosting an annual neighborhood cleanup and home maintenance day. Hundreds of volunteers from the area spend several hours on a Saturday in April cleaning up parks and streets, as well as helping homeowners in need with exterior home maintenance. This year, I want to let you know that we had several sponsors that came forward. This is something that we hadn't even planned for, and this is, they are coming to us asking how they can help. Verizon Waste Management, Evans Brown, Strata Equity Group, Menifee Auto Air Pro, Sun City Civic Association, Joe's Hardware of Lake Elsinore. We had the Center for Spiritual Living, Eastern Municipal Water District, Faith Lutheran, the Gap Outlet from Lake Elsinore, Hospice of the Valley, JustServe.org, Lake Menifee Women's Club, the Marine Wing Squadron 374, Mayor Mann and the City Council, Menifee United Church of Christ, Falco &amp; Sons Plumbing, Menifee United Methodist Church, Menifee Stake, the Church Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, Mountain View Community Church, Navy Recruiter Division of San Diego, Quail Valley Community Group, the Rotary Club of Menifee, Saint Vincent's Farrar Catholic Church, Sun City Garden Club, Thrivent Financial, Oasis Super Citizens. We were able to revitalize 31 homes of seniors from low to moderate income, 29 homes where they signed up for window washing and porch cleaning. 100 vehicles came through in the Quail Valley part of the cleanup. And I just want to thank staff from the city for all their help. At the last minute, because of the sponsors this year, all the volunteers, most of them received T-shirts, Menifee Better Together T-shirts, and sponsors on the back. It was a great event. There were over 420 volunteers at a value of volunteer time that's $23.07 an hour, that equals 1,680 hours, which, if you look at a dollar amount, that would be $38,757. That equals 1,680 hours, which, if you look at a dollar amount, that would be $38,757.60 for the city of Menifee.
Thank you for your leadership. Next speaker, please.
Janet Anderson.
Good evening, Mayor Mann and Council. I just wanted to follow up on Lisa, the cleanup in Quail Valley on April 25th. It was a great day. We took in a lot of trash. But I especially wanted to thank Steve Glenn and Alan Young for all of their help. They helped me pull together all of my volunteers and get the word out with flyers, and so we had a good turnout this year. So I just wanted to thank the city and Steve and Alan. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Next speaker, please.
Your Honor, the balance of your speakers are on your public hearing item.
Thank you. Onto the consent calendar.
Sorry, Mayor, maybe nine would be.
I'm sorry.
Item nine?
Yeah, yeah, item nine. Mr. Edgerton, I'm going to, since you're remotely, we're on council member comments and reports. Mr. Edgerton, do you have anything to share?
Do you have anything to share under council member reports or comments?
Well, I hear a couple of things. One, as always, I want to thank Councilman Greg August for holding the fort on the committee that I serve on, and the mayor for holding the whole fort there. One of the other concerns in reference to some of these signs that are going up for books and throwing away glassware and coverware, you know, et cetera, taking your scrap, that goes to the privilege of other cities, and I think we should look into that. They should be paid. First of all, it's a business, and they should be doing, they should be having us a tax. They should have a license to do that in our city. I saw some photos given to me today showing me these various vendors out there taking in, you know, material, everything from books to old bottles. And it wasn't for our city, and it wasn't for our causes. So I think we should look into that. I think that's to our detriment. Other than that, I would go on to, as always, thank the fabulous staff and my fabulous Rob and our mayor, and thank all of you so much. That's it, I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Edgerton. Councilmember August?
Just a quick, I'm going to tag on to something Lisa Sobek said and Linda Anderson. I attended the Better Together, and it seems to be becoming a signature event. It's the third one. It's becoming a signature for the city of Menifee. It's growing and getting bigger every year. And there were military units, not only from the 374th or 29 Palms, but there were several units that participated from Camp Pendleton and also Balboa Navy Hospital. I want to thank Community Service, Robert Lennox. His team is always there for the city. I want to also thank Julie Woodruff, who is there, and Rob, your staff's always there to support community activities. But I want to say a special thanks to Lisa Sobek, who had the vision three years ago to see, she did have the vision to put this thing in forward motion, and she deserves a lot of credit for working for it each year and year. And it's becoming, like I said, it's becoming a signature and more popular throughout the city. And a special thanks from the people from SCCA. We spent most of the morning over there, and you can just see the cheer, the happiness, and the gratefulness on the faces of all those people that we serve. So that was a really good effort, and I thank everyone for it.
Thank you, Mr. August. Mayor Pro Tem Denver?
In addition to what's already been discussed, I went to a law enforcement, we went, several of us, went to law enforcement appreciation dinner and awards assembly at Pechanga, and it was wonderful to see the county and the area and cities give awards to our police officers. Also, went to Saboba Indian Reservation, and there was an event where the city of Menifee got some awards, which I'll give you, for our efforts in the half marathon. And basically, it was put on by United Way, having to do with all the things that they do and we do. And so that's sort of what I got involved in.
Thank you, Mr. Denver, and I appreciate you standing in place for me at the Saboba from that one. I really appreciate it, sir. Mr. August?
May I say one more?
Of course.
Thank you. Tomorrow morning, I don't know if anybody's going to mention this tomorrow, but we're celebrating the National Day Observance of Prayer at the Church of Latter-day Saints tomorrow. We're having a pancake breakfast, and the theme is going to be to honor our first responders. So it's at 8:00 in the morning. Anybody who would like to attend, we'd like to see you there and consider it the word spread if nobody speaks about it tonight. So we hope to see you all there, as many people to honor our police law enforcement, fire department, first responders, and all the good Samaritans in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. August. Ms. Leesmeier, anything?
Yes, sir.
I had the opportunity to attend not one, but two RCTC subcommittee meetings related to projects in the county as my role as a RCTC commissioner. And then also, we had the opportunity to present and dedicate in the Audi Murphy Ranch Development. You probably saw the newspaper articles about dedicating Sergeant Kelly Road in Audi Murphy Ranch, and as well as our inaugural colleague, Fred Twymon, and we dedicated Twymon Way in the Audi Murphy Ranch into KB Home Development as well. And it was a great event. I want to thank staff for putting their best foot forward with the community and the developer to make sure that those men were honored, and their legacy will go on with the naming of those streets. And so I'm very grateful. I'd also like to thank, because, you know, I'm grateful in a different way for the month of April having five Wednesdays, because on April 15th, the day after the last council meeting, my mom went into the emergency room, and three or four days, well, actually Monday, the following Monday, she remained in the hospital the whole day, those four days, and she had cancer surgery on Monday, and she's still battling that, and she'll start her chemotherapy this Friday. And I just want to thank, again, my colleagues and the staff, and all the well wishers, and a lot of you are in the audience tonight, and those, her neighbors, and my friends and family. And her friends at the North Golf Course. I really appreciate all the sentiments that you've shared for her. Really appreciate that. Thank you so much. That's what community is about. Onto the consent calendar. Do we have any modifications to the consent calendar tonight? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Should we move?
You have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Edgerton, we're voting on the consent calendar, and I am calling roll, and so you're first. Councilmember Edgerton, vote on the consent calendar.
Yes, I'm supporting it. Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember August, Councilmember Leesmeier.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Denver.
Aye.
And Mayor Mann.
Aye. Onto our public hearing for this evening, agenda item 11.1. We have a public hearing for adoption of the city of Menifee's 2015-2016 Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant. And what we're going to do is take staff report before we take public comment. Mr. Johnson, if you would, proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, Robert Lennox and his staff, Margarita Corneo will have the balance of the item.
I will go ahead and thank you, Mayor Mann and council members. I'll go ahead and turn it over to Margarita, who is our resident expert on CDBG, and will cover the balance of the item.
Just really quick, does anybody have the clicker for the PowerPoint? Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight, I have a brief presentation relating to the public hearing for tonight's program year 2015-2016 Annual Action Plan as it relates to the city's Community Development Block Grant participation. So the Community Development Block Grant Program is a federal program that is administered by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. It's a program that provides communities with funding resources to address the wide range of unique community needs. Prior to 2012-13, the city of Menifee participated in the County of Riverside's comprehensive CDBG program, but starting with 2012-13, the city submitted an application to participate as an entitlement community, giving the city the opportunity to design and select all its programs and activities specific to the city of Menifee. So it gives the city a lot more local control in being an entitlement community. Each year, the annual allocations are determined by a HUD formula and are typically communicated to each city around February, March. So comprehensively, community development grant funding is intended for the purposes of providing decent housing, a suitable living environment, and to provide opportunities to expand economic opportunities. With that said, the range of activities and programs that can be funded is quite diverse, of which one of the most current programs or activities that's underway is the renovations that are happening at the senior center if you're drive-by, but it also also covers funding for a lot of the public services and nonprofit organizations that provide services to our community. So in this slide, it's an outline of the comprehensive CDBG program. Each five years, a citizens' participation plan is established with a five-year consolidated plan and a complementary analysis of impediments to fair housing. Each year, an annual action plan that identifies each program and activity that will be completed in the upcoming year is completed. So we are in program year five, four, actually, of our first five-year consolidated plan. That's the 2015-16 annual program, and it formally starts on July 1st and would conclude with June 30th of 2016. The annual action plan is provided for a 30-day comment period prior to this public hearing tonight, so it was formally notified and made available at the various libraries, and also noticed at the senior center for anybody who's interested in commenting on it. And this falls in line with the city's adopted citizens' participation plan, which is intended to encourage citizens' participation in the development of the consolidated plan, the annual action plan, and the annual performance and evaluation reports that are presented at the end. An integral part of this, too, is the participation of the Menifee Citizens Advisory Committee, which each year reviews and provides funding recommendations related to the public services and programming activities for the upcoming year. So on February 17th of this year, the newly reorganized and restructured MCAG met and reviewed 10 applications that were submitted for the 15-16 year and provided their funding recommendations, which is included in the annual action plan and as well as part of your staff report, supporting documents. So all the projects and programs and activities included in the annual action plan for this upcoming year reflect what was identified as high need by the community when it was first set up in 2012-13, and that includes infrastructure improvements, home repair program, youth activities, senior citizens' services, park recreations, and community So in this map, it illustrates what are the income-eligible target areas that are eligible for public facilities and infrastructure projects. So the purple areas that you see highlight the census tracts that qualify under the low moderate qualifications provided by HUD. And this slide provides a breakdown of the projects and activities that are proposed to be included for this year's upcoming year. That includes the Minor Home Repair Grant Program, which has been identified as something that would be included every year, is part of the five-year process. This upcoming year, the two public works projects that we're focusing on is adding a permanent ADA accessible restroom to Rancho Ramona. Currently, there's only a portable unit that's rented. And also, the playground needs some resurfacing improvements and ADA accessibility improvements. As far as public services, the funding recommendation reflected here shows six organizations, and this is reflective of what the MCAG discussed and recommended for funding. The total funding is at the maximum limit, which is 15% for public services and reflects $73,000 for the upcoming year. And lastly, is planning and administration, and that covers fair housing services, which is a requirement for participation in the Community Development Block Program, as well as any advertising and administrative costs and staffing related to CDBG, which is the equivalent of at least partial funding of two positions in community services. So tonight's recommended action is that council conduct a public hearing, adopt a resolution approving the 15-16 Annual Action Plan, and authorize staff to submit the annual action plan. That concludes my presentations, but I am available for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council to staff? I have one for you. What happens, what do we do next year as we head into the year five, program year five? Do we start all over, and do we do another community outreach and retool everything? Basically, start from square one? Or do we just build upon what we have, package it, and resell it again? Or do we start over?
It's a little bit of both. You definitely go through the same, similar exercises of doing a lot of community outreach because it's similar kind of to your general plan, where you go through a five-year process and you set your foundation of what you're going to do in the next five years, but you don't necessarily forget what you've done in the first set of years. You build off on it, but it is treated as a whole new consolidated plan, and it's an opportunity to kind of really revisit if certain elements, like your citizens' participation plan, you may want to reorganize or restructure it. That's an opportunity to kind of really set it. So it's a little bit new, but you look a little bit on what you did in the past. So for us, it would be our second time going through it, so I'm sure there's improvements that we would want to do in this second time around.
Mr. August?
Thank you.
Quick question. For anybody who would like to consider applying for a grant next year, would they contact you, and would you just hand them a big application process, send them going, and then take all the time to fill it out, turn it in, and you say, "Sorry, you don't apply"? Or do you kind of give them kind of an interview as to whether or not this is something that may apply or may not apply?
Okay, so depending on the program and activity. When we're talking about the public services, we go through a formal notification and advertising process typically around December. We have a mandatory technical workshop that covers what the eligibility requirements are going to be. Now, if we receive like an interest from a nonprofit organization, before that, we still go through the explanation because the requirements will typically stay, are going to stay the same. They don't do the application then, but we keep them on an interest list, and then they, when it comes to the application process, we go through the technical workshop and then the submittal. Now, for the minor home repair grant, where you're giving assistance to an eligible low moderate income person, we release applications to shortly after we get our formal approval from HUD. They have an application, but the application also comes with guidelines that'll tell you what the minimum requirements are to qualify. So it'll tell you income, what kind of documentation you need to provide, and then the application itself is about four to five pages with some supporting documentation.
So the application would be for, if there was a church out in town who wanted to perhaps apply for a grant for a public park or something, would they, would that, all they would have to do probably to input what their application would be simply five pages or something like that?
Well, the public services applications is a little bit longer than that. I want to say it's about, I want to say it's about at least 10 pages, but if they're interested in applying for it, or at least exploring what kind of CDBG requirements apply for a public service, then they can contact Community Services and me specifically at any time during the year, and we can go over the preliminary requirements, and when we get to the application process, we'll go through. You're welcome.
Mr. Lennox?
In addition, throughout the year, we do post on the city website, there's within the Community Services page, a CDBG section that outlines all the requirements and breaks it down very simply for anyone who's interested in applying.
So they wouldn't come in and, you wouldn't say something like, say something to them like, "Don't even bother." You wouldn't say anything like that?
No.
Because you would be the ones to know if something's even close to fitting the qualifications or requirements, so.
We encourage all applicants.
Encourage all applicants. Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Hearing none, I will open up the public hearing. Did you have one?
No.
At time 7:49. Madam Clerk, was this properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor.
And did we receive any additional correspondence as a result?
None that is not included already in your packet.
Thank you very kindly. Would you please call the first speaker on this item?
Yes. Suzanne Hodges.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here. My name is Suzanne Hodges, and I am the Executive Director and the PATH certified instructor at Equate Horsemanship and Therapeutic Riding. I was here a couple months ago to apply for the Community Development Block Grant, and we came back to appeal the decision of the committee and to present our program and what we have to offer here in the valley. In our first year of our program, we have expanded from 14 students to 39 students with special needs. We have worked to secure contracts with school districts and the military for post-traumatic stress disorder, working with horses. All of this has been accomplished through private funding and/or service fees, and we have an all-volunteer staff and Board of Directors. We are PATH certified center. PATH is the Professional Association of Therapeutic Horsemanship, and I am also a PATH certified instructor. We have also a doctor in psychology and a marriage and family counselor to help us with our participants. Why horses, some people might ask? Horses are a great motivator for speech, for learning, for focus with children with ADHD, and for healing. Rather than experiencing therapies in an office, individuals experience the physical and psychological benefits through interacting with horses. Outside and are given gifts of self-confidence, strength, motor skills, and communication. This is a respectful environment for the horses and for the participants. In our first year, we have a participant who's just showing first signs of communication at age seven. We also have a student who just started to hold up his head independently at age six. He has cerebral palsy, and when he came to us, his family does not have enough money to send him to physical therapy, so the only therapy he gets is through the school district, which is once every three months. Since he started riding with us, he's had 26 rides. He's developed trunk control. He's started to be able to hold up his head on his own. And they don't have enough money to pay for services, so it's funded solely by individual private donations. We also have a rider who's 14 years old. He's deaf with ADHD. His first ride ever was with us. He's got 36 rides now. He's riding, trotting, walking independently, and he just started to volunteer for us. It's incredible to see what has happened in a year. We'd love to expand our program to be able to accommodate individuals with special needs in the Menifee area, and in order to be able to do that, we were really hoping that we would be able to get some funding through the CDBG grant to be able to expand our program. Currently, we serve individuals from Lake Elsinore and Winchester all the way down to Vista, and we do have an individual child, low-income, from the City of Menifee currently. She's on the autism spectrum. She's four years old. She's just had a few rides so far, and it's just been incredible to see eye contact and the new changes, so thank you for listening.
Thank you.
And before you step away, does anybody have any questions? Where do you operate from?
I'm currently in Marietta. The committee had asked us why we operate out of Marietta, and the property that we operate on is donated, so that is why we're in Marietta.
And how long have you been in operation, then?
Our program started last April. We started our nonprofit in 2013 in December. We are a 501(c)(3), and we are now currently in our fifth nine-week session with 39 students total.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Mayor, Councilman, staff, thank you for having us tonight. I am Melanie Miller. I'm nervous. I'm usually on the other side of this. I am the treasurer for the Equate Riding School. It is a therapeutic horsemanship and riding school for disadvantaged children with both mental and physical disabilities. We applied for the CDBG grant funds. The good thing is I have a lot of years' background in managing CDBG funds, and we felt this would be a good way for us to expand our program. We currently service three of the public activities, services for youth, health services, and educational services. And this is why, one of the reasons we're here to appeal having us on your, when we came before the committee, we originally said we would get the funds, and then in looking at it, they, we were kind of bumped down to the next position and lost the funding, so we're here to appeal that. We, our activities here solely benefit the low and moderate income in the City of Menifee. We're looking to expand our program. As she mentioned, we currently have, we've served three in the past, and we're currently serving an autistic child. We would like to expand that to 20 additional new students, and this can be done with the CDBG grant funds. As she mentioned, we are now operating solely through donations and private funding, and we think that this could help further our program. Look at my notes here. We have, as the other thing she mentioned, and this shows to sustainability, we have a property in Marietta that is totally donated to us along with the horses, and that is why we chose it there. It's kind of central to all the cities. Suzanne and I both were raised in this valley here and have some strong ties to it, and would like to see the program expanded throughout all the cities of this valley. As she said, the current student from Menifee, the autistic child, is receiving her scholarship totally through private funds. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to hear them, and thank you for listening to us.
Thank you very kindly. Any questions? Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor Mann and Council members. Thank you for, again, the opportunity to apply for funding to help with the food program here in the, in the City of Menifee. And also to, first of all, to say thank you to the community of Menifee, who last year donated 198,000 pounds of food to help the community, to help the community, those that are suffering from struggling with hunger or hunger insecurity is the new, I guess the new label that we're calling hunger these days. Thanks to that, the cupboard was able to provide 11,558 food bags and boxes in 2014. And back to the community involvement, a large part of that was based on support and encouragement by the city, city council and staff in encouraging donations at various events throughout the year. Who do we serve? Primarily, we are serving the elderly and disabled with no family support, who are living as best they can on less than $10,000 a year. We're supporting hard-working families whose income is falling short of meeting their needs. They're having to choose between paying their utilities and purchasing food. We're also helping support women living in a domestic abuse shelter. We help the homeless, and most importantly, we're helping children who do not have access to healthy food outside of their school nutrition program for our school, school bag program. It's currently one of the most important things that we're doing throughout the country. There is even recently an article in a national publication, which some of our council members might be familiar with, about the need for children and to meet their nutritional needs so that they can do well in school and they can have productive lives. We can only accomplish all of these programs with the help of the city, the schools, and the churches. Currently, we have 669 families registered, and that represents 1,391 individuals. They can get a monthly emergency food box. They can get a weekly supplemental bag of fresh bread, eggs, and produce. There is the school bag program, which I mentioned. We also are distributing U.S. commodities on a monthly basis, and in partnership with other organizations, we are also doing holiday boxes at Thanksgiving and Christmas. We try to focus on not just filling tummies, but giving nutritional food with the fresh produce, meat, and eggs, and we're only able to do that with support like the Community Development Block Grant funds. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions? Next speaker.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I am representing kind of just an opinion about the CDBG grant and the awards as they took place. I did assist one of the organizations that was awarded, a grant at this point anyway, was given to recommendation to, for award. But I'm actually here because I want to just kind of bring something to your attention. I've worked as a grant writer and written grants for CDBG grants before in other counties, and I'm also a mental health professional. And one of the things that I was really uncomfortable with as I went through this process with the advisory committee was that in the end, what happened was one of the committee, one of the recommendations from the committee was actually to award the city council, I'm sorry, the city, the City of Menifee, on one of the $10,000 allotments. And I think it has, I mean, Mr. Lennox was very professional, reclusive himself from the vote. At the same time, I think it really doesn't, it shows, it shows appearance of impropriety, and at the same time, I think it goes against what CDBG grants are really for, in my experience and reading from the action plan that you all developed. I think that that kind of, there's plenty, there's almost $400,000 that are already coming from CDB grants that's going into the city, and $10,000 more dollars, I think, really would be more effectively used with a community agency. You had 10 applicants for this $63,000 that's available to agencies, and there's many more that were, I think, very qualified, and one of them, in fact, and I have absolutely nothing to do professionally or personally with this organization, but the folks that were up here earlier talking about the Equate Horseman Program. As a mental health professional, that kind of help is phenomenally successful and very, very expensive and very difficult to find access to for people. So I would like to, I want to kind of appeal that as well and just bring to your attention that I think that the city awarding itself some money that's meant for the, for the community is, doesn't appear very appropriate. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Mr. August?
Yes, to the speaker, I certainly can appreciate your comments, and actually, I had the same question, and what I, to Mr. Lennox, and I would like to give him just a minute to explain how that, how it was used and what the intentions were.
Thank you, Councilman and Speaker. The intent of the application from the city is to award community members who are interested in undertaking beautification efforts within the city. That can be for public facilities, but can also be for neighborhoods and private residences that are a general neighborhood benefit. So it is not intended to solely go directly back to the city. As per the, per the guidelines and the part of the action plan, the intent here is to beautify the city and put it back into the city's efforts. That application was heard by the committee, and the committee scored it accordingly, and that's, that is why it's on the list for consideration by council this evening.
Do you know where those funds have specifically been used or where they're going?
No, the, the structure of that public service program is intended to be one where we accept applications from community members who want to organize those beautification efforts. So one of the recommendations was if a community wanted to get together and do a, one of the projects for Menifee Better Together, this would be a funding source for them to secure paint supplies, materials to undertake those efforts.
Thank you, and thank you.
You're welcome.
And just one clarification point regarding the process itself. Many cities and entitlement communities do go use funds for their own public services to keep the process fair. The city Community Services Department submitted its own application, and it was presented to the MCAG just like all other applications for consideration to ensure that any and all applicants were viewed and rated at the same perspective.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name's Debbie Mannion, and I'm with Lake Menifee Women's Club, and we are asking for the grant, and we have been unrecommended. Our program is with the Spark of Love, and we provide toys for kids, and with this grant, we would plan to expand our program and provide educational supplies, blankets, these kinds of things that are needed items for the kids. The program has been in place, we've been a partner with the Fire Department for nine years. The other partners are US Bank, Rotary, the Cupboard, and the Fire Department from Quail Valley is our main source. And it, most of our activities are one day, which is the Saturday before Christmas. However, it is a year-round program. We, with the Fire Department, they store items and give them to the families throughout the year. So with this program, the Lake Menifee Women's Club will then look into being able to give more books, supplies, science projects, help with kids if they need funding to do SAT scoring, if they need tutoring or anything to help with their SATs, puzzles, music supplies, any of that kind of stuff that helps the kids do outside activities and gets them more ready for college so that they can continue. The program, on the particular day in December, we provide almost 900 kids, and then after that, throughout, through the Fire Department, we have already hit 1,250. So it's a long, it's a long day. It's a great program for the one day, but it is a year-round program, and that's what we're planning to use the $10,000 for is to enhance all the extra parts of the program that we can do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mannion. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and staff. My name is John Wan, Executive Director of the Boys and Girls Club of Menifee. We are located at 26301 Garbani Road in the old Menifee Elementary Campus. Our mission is to provide a safe, positive, and affordable place for children, especially those who are at risk, to reach their full potential as caring, productive, and responsible citizens. How are we doing it? Proof is in the numbers. We opened our doors June 2014. We have over 800 enrolled members. 203 of those members are receiving financial assistance. 250 of those children are free or reduced lunch at schools. 142 of those members are in our transportation program before and after school. Over 200 youth participate in our sports leagues, archery lessons, enrichment activities, dance, singing lessons. We've served over 20,000 meals since September. We have 26 military-active families in our Mission Youth Outreach Program. We've served after-school snacks, over 10,000 snacks since September. We've served over 10,000 dinners since September. For the summer of 2015, we're going to serve breakfast and dinner for all our members. Club membership is an annual fee of $20 a year. Access to the program Monday through Fridays from 2:30 to 6:30 for ages 6 to 18. Programming services we provide, we provide before- and after-school programs, enrichment services, snack and summer program, and our sports leagues. Transportation, the schools that we service in Menifee are your schools listed here, all the middle schools, elementary, including Santa Rosa and Paloma High School. Our BGCA core programs, this is what we're known for, character and leadership development, education and career development, health and life skills, the arts, and sports, fitness, and recreation. Our enrichment services are programs that we also serve at our club, Girl Scouts, archery lessons, guitar lessons, Bricks for Kids, which is a Lego robotics program, dance lessons, taekwondo, Rainbow Chefs, which is a healthy cooking class, holiday camps, and summer camps. Our sports leagues include soccer, flag football, T-ball, basketball, and volleyball. The CDBG project information, it's developed to meet the needs of the youth in our community, allows parents to enter and remain in the workforce and to go to school for their education, provides financial scholarships to offset the cost for before- and after-school programs, including transportation program. And I would like to say thank you again for considering the Boys and Girls Club of Menifee.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Dorcas Shakman.
Shakman. Sorry. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Mann, Council members. I'm Dorcas Shakman of the Assistance League of Temecula Valley, and I'd first like to thank the City of Menifee for all of your support in the past. We would like for you to know that Assistance League has a strong commitment to the Menifee community. community. We have been members of the Chamber of Commerce for 26 years. In 1997, 18 years ago, we began providing new school clothing to underprivileged students in the Menifee Union School District. Since that time, we have served more than 7,000 students through our Operation School Bell program. Total students that we have served over the years is now over 26,000. Our local chapter of Assistance League was founded in 1989 and we're an all-volunteer group of over 200 members. 100% of the funds spent on philanthropic programs serve local community needs. Operation School Bell is our main philanthropic program. This program provides new school clothing to low-income students in grades K through 8 in the Menifee Union School District. In the fall of 2014, 403 Menifee students received new school clothing, excuse me. In addition to providing new school clothes to Menifee students, Assistance League works with other local nonprofits to serve the needs of the community. Working with the Menifee Community Cupboard, we have provided backpacks for the Weekend Backpack Program. For the past two years, we have provided art supplies to the Menifee Arts Council's Children's Summer Art Institute. In October of 2014, we provided books to the Menifee Boys and Girls Club to start their new library. We have also provided teacher grants for student enrichment programs and will once again provide these grants in the fall of 2015. Our community outreach program regularly provides services to meet the one-time or emergency needs of the Menifee community. For the Operation School Bell program, students are referred to the program by the school health clerks. Beneficiary households are required to certify household income, provide supporting documentation, and meet HUD's regional low-income standards. By providing assistance with funding for this program, you are supporting Assistance League in continuing to serve a greater number of disadvantaged students in the Menifee community. 100% of grant monies received for Operation School Bell goes towards the purchase of new school clothing for students served by this program. And I want to compliment you on your community services staff, especially this young lady. She has been so helpful to us. She's a godsend. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Those are all of the speakers, sir.
Marvelous. Thank you very kindly. Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak on this matter? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing at time 8:13. We're inside the rail. Mr. Edgerton, are you still with us?
Mr. Edgerton, can you hear us? Mr. Edgerton?
Yes.
Okay. Are you with us on this public hearing item for CDBG?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure you were with us on this item for CDBG. We're getting ready to bring it inside the rail now.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Gentlemen, how would you like to proceed on this particular item? Are there any additional questions or discussion? Mr. August?
Bethany.
Yes, sir.
Help me out. Where are you? Give me your point in the book.
11 point.
Have to go over the sound system in the future.
Yes, sir.
Where are you? What discussion item are you on?
11.1. The public speakers have spoken about their CDBG and now we are on 11.1, Inside the Rail. Council is speaking about the item.
Well, good. We are where I thought I was.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
All right. Where are we at, gentlemen? How would you like to proceed with this year's funding? Mr. August?
I just want to make a couple of comments, Mr. Mayor, to the people who spoke tonight, the people that weren't approved and the people that were approved. And for the, I have to be honest with you, I do put a lot of weight into the committees and the recommendations and things like that. They spend time in parts of the community that I never spend in. But listening to, listen to all your, whatever your, your, the benefit of your organizations, what's behind your requests, they're all very worthwhile, they're all a benefit and have a high value to the community. I can tell you that we continue each year to get more and more money for this program. And this year, as opposed to last year, we approved more participants than last. So if you didn't get approved, and it's not because it wasn't a good program, I just hope that you would apply again next year because we continue to add approvals to the city as, as the funds become, get bigger and bigger. So I want to thank you on, they all sound like wonderful organizations, especially for the kids, so thank you.
Mr. Edgerton?
Did you have a comment on the item, Mr. Edgerton?
No. I, I don't even.
Anyone else? I, I too would like to echo the thoughts of Mr. August. It seems, I lament sometimes that it's the same organizations over and over and over again that apply, and it's the same organizations that get recommended. And I would hope that, you know, as we go forward with this program in the future, that hopefully we'll get more applicants from nonprofit organizations so that we can maybe fund some other deserving entities. Not that the others who have been recommended are not, it's just that for me, I'm a little challenged by funding the same organizations over and over and over and over again, year after year. I'm a little troubled by that, but that's just my own opinion. And that's my comment on this item. Is there a motion to accept the staff report as presented?
Mr. Mayor, could we break this into two parts? Vote on the balance of, well, first off, pull off the projects and programs having to do with Rancho Ramona Park and vote on that separately, and then vote on the rest of it, as I need to abstain from the voting on the Rancho Ramona Park as I own a property within 500 feet of there.
Okay, I understood. Thank you, Mr. Denver, for that. Just a quick clarification, Mr. Melching, do we have to take two separate motions or can we take one motion? And if Mr. Mayor Protem wants to abstain on one line item, we can record that abstention?
We can do it either of those two ways. The latter way would be more akin to how the consent calendar is sometimes handled and we would just, it would be one vote and we would record Councilman Denver's vote as an abstention as to that one line item.
Let's do that.
Okay. Thank you very kindly. Is there a motion?
So moved.
May I have a second? A roll call vote, please, for the CDBG funding for this upcoming year.
Vote on approval of the 2015-16 Annual Action Plan. Councilmember Edgerton.
Aye.
Councilmember August. Councilmember Lees Meyer.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Denver.
Aye, understanding I'm abstaining from the Rancho Ramona restroom.
Right, got it. And so noted. And Mayor Mann?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. And I thank you, staff, for a wonderful process and bringing it together and making it go. Look forward to next year. On to discussion items. Agenda item 12.1, Approved Community Services Staffing Plan, Vehicle Leases and Transition Expenses. Mr. Johnson, staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We have the item before you, 12.1, to approve the Community Services Staffing Plan, Vehicle Leases and Transition Expenses. I'm going to turn the balance of the item over to Mr. Lennox. But first, I want to preface that we had a fairly successful year with Valleywide as our contractor for the first nine or so, 10 months. And going through the process that I think we've established and this council has set up with our approval of our Parks Master Plan and also with the approval and up and working work that our Parks, Recs, and Trails Commission is doing, we felt it appropriate to move forward with a staffing plan for community services and not renew our two one-year renewable agreements with Valleywide for park recreation programming and maintenance. And I'll turn the balance of the presentation over to Mr. Lennox.
Thank you, City Manager, Mayor, and Council. Give you some brief background that City Manager touched on just a moment ago. Back in May 2014, the City Council did authorize a contract with Valleywide for the maintenance and programming of city park facilities. Again, those facilities are primarily the ones that reside on the west side of the I-215 freeway. Following that, shortly thereafter, in September of 2014, council authorized an additional work contract for extra work to cover things that were not covered or obviously included in the base agreement from, from May. Within the year, within the last 12 months, in-house staff, city staff, has successfully completed several special events, Christmas tree lighting, city birthday bash, Independence Day, Spring Fest, Menifee Better Together, several signature events, as well as kicked off our master plan process. So all, of course, our commission and committees, a very busy year for the department. And then, and recently in April, staff did issue Valleywide a non-renewal letter with plans in mind to move forward with providing the services and maintenance in-house for the upcoming fiscal year. And so what that means is the responsibility and scope for facilities and programs covers really three main areas. First is about 40 acres of parks that are owned by the city currently. The next is 10 landscape areas, which represents about 550,000 square feet of landscape space, not including the various trails that run throughout the city currently. And then lastly, the three centers, Lazy Creek, Casineros, being two of them. And then the Casineros facility also features two annex buildings, the north annex and then the west annex, which I'll explain a little bit more about a bit later. In the next fiscal year, though, it is anticipated there will be additional facilities coming online, three parks in particular, Spirit Park, which is PA 31, part of the Audi Murphy Ranch Development, Central Park, which is part of the Menifee Town Center, and then Hidden Hills Park, which is in plan check right now. Additionally, there are three landscape areas, Murphy Ranch Road, Right-Away Landscaping, also part of Audi Murphy Ranch Development, Sun City Boulevard, Street Median, which is on our schedule for improvement, and then, of course, maintenance thereafter, and then the Town Center Right-Away, which is going to be adjacent to and part of the Central Park project as well. In order to achieve the maintenance and programming of all of those areas and any additional ones that come online next year or the years after, staff is recommending some changes. Most immediately, as you know, there are three staff that comprise the Community Services Department. That's myself, the director, Margarita Cornejo, management analyst, and Alan Yun, our senior admin analyst. The additional request for the new staff includes a total of 10 full-time equivalent positions. And those are listed in the bottom left-hand quarter of the screen. They range from office worker all the way down to park landscape maintenance specialists. What I will highlight here is in the italicized line item about halfway down that table is community service leader. That is a part-time position and it says two because it's the equivalent of two in terms of hours. It takes 2,080 hours to be equivalent of one full-time position. So in reality, that could be multiple part-time people that add up to 4,160 hours. So in total, if approved this evening, the next fiscal year's staffing lineup would be what the right, the far-right table shows, with a total of 13 full-time equivalent positions, which equates to 11 actual full-time people. And for the current year, in order to accommodate funding of those positions for one month, staff is requesting a line item of $48,500 to bring those people online before the new fiscal year begins. And that would cover their salaries and benefits through that one month. For the other positions that staff is looking to recruit, I remind the council that because Menifee is an equal opportunity employment employer, we would be looking to do a full recruitment on it. However, those that are currently providing this service either through a contract or former, former county employees are encouraged to apply as they would be very, very well-qualified applicants for the positions. Additionally, there are some transition costs related to bringing these services in-house. The new department headquarters, which has been targeted at the Casineros West Annex Building, if you're at the Casineros Senior Center, it is the farthest west building, formerly, obviously, one of the county facilities and it was the home for Supervisor Stone for many years, is currently vacant, but it is owned by the city. There are some capital items that are needed to outfit that facility, to make it usable as a department headquarters. Staff is requesting about $120,000 from unrestricted fund balance to accommodate that. As I mentioned, the personnel cost for the one month is about $48,500. Office furnishings for that building is $30,000, and multipurpose rooms, which include a room on the north end of that annex building, as well as the north annex building, formerly part of the Care Canexus program, that is now vacated. And we've, the council did approve a lease with the Arts Council Menifee to use the office space there. There is a common community room there that would also be an extension of the Senior Center and what we're calling a community co-op. Furnishings of $9,500 would outfit both of those spaces. And then finally, IT components, infrastructure, phones, computers, and other pieces in the amount of $32,000. The ability to maintain these facilities, right now, the city does not have additional or excess fleet vehicles for personnel to use. And so staff is recommending the, instead of a straight-out purchase of park maintenance vehicles, there, we are recommending an open-ended lease through Enterprise to secure three maintenance trucks on a 60-month open-ended lease, which equates to about $600 a month per truck. The program that's offered is, it provides a maintenance program, which essentially covers all routine, oil changes, obviously, full warranty coverage, roadside assistance, accident and risk management. And at the end of that lease, there is the option to buy out those vehicles or convert the value over to a trade-in for a new purchase or to execute a new lease on a new vehicle. In the audience today, Jay Ash and Scott LaBass, I hope I'm saying that correctly, are here from Enterprise and they can answer some questions as well, if, if needed. In total, the cost fiscally for the city, as I mentioned, there's a request for about $120,000 from the unrestricted fund balance to cover transition expenses. Within fiscal year 1415, we are also requesting a part-time, some funding for part-time summer staff to be transferred within Fund 480 as a deductive, essentially a deductive change order from the Valleywide contract so that city staff can utilize that to bring on part-time employees now so that they can begin summer camps that start in June and would then, of course, straddle the fiscal year. And then in 2015-16, annual salaries just for the new positions would total $581,000 and that is spread across various funds, not all general fund. And then one year of the vehicle lease payments totals $21,600, and again, also spread across various funds. In total, though, after reorganizing the funding allocation across the entire, for the entire department, including CFD funds, CSA funds, CDBG and others, we have realized a $8,000 net decrease obligation on the general fund just by strategically placing these. And we were able to do that this year because of the number of new facilities that came online within the special district funds. So it actually helped alleviate some of our overhead and obligation to the general fund. So our recommendation for council this evening is to approve the staffing plan and implement a, to implement a comprehensive park and recreation program for the west side of the city of Menifee, approve the positions and classifications and direct staff to initiate the recruitments, authorize a transfer of $5,500 from professional services within Fund 480, authorize City Manager to execute vehicle lease agreements to secure the maintenance trucks, as I mentioned in the staff report, and then approve $120,000 allocation from unrestricted fund balance for the transition expenses. As I mentioned, I'm here to answer any questions, as is, as are the representatives from Enterprise.
Thank you, Mr. Lennox. Are there any questions of staff at this point? Mr. Denver?
I guess this is a question. Have we, did you think this through as to why we're not buying the, the trucks? Because you're actually each year paying for one, almost, one of the trucks and you don't own it. It seems, in my own personal world, I do not lease, that is not a prudent thing to do from a business point of view. And I'm sorry that you're doing that.
Well, you make a good point and personally, I probably wouldn't lease either, however professionally I would. professionally I would. This is a full, comprehensive lease, so it's not just for the vehicle itself, it's routine maintenance and additional items as far as risk, and Robert can go into that, if you have specific questions, then our friends over here could answer some questions, too. But the bottom line is, we don't have a fleet department, so we have nowhere to take our vehicles to get serviced if we purchase them outright. We also looked at the AQMD funding to buy alternative fuel vehicles, they don't offer them trucks. So, we do need the truck vehicle itself. The other issue is, a private citizen wouldn't get the opportunity to have this lease. It is open-ended, and we have the opportunity to purchase the vehicles at the end of the lease.
We don't own any vehicles?
We don't have a fleet department currently.
So, when we maintain one of our other vehicles, we don't take it?
Well, we do a number of different things. Sometimes we ask AMR to help us out, sometimes we have, when we have routine oil and maintenance issues, we'll go to a local shop to have that done, but we don't have a package, per se that these trucks would come with.
And we couldn't take these trucks to the same places?
We could, we could. I would rather have a maintenance program based on the vehicle that we purchase.
So, piggybacking on that, where would these vehicles go if there was a maintenance issue?
Go ahead, Robert.
Sure, I think this is a good opportunity to invite up the Enterprise folks. They have a network of service providers in the area that we can go to.
I think he means if they're not, if we do not do the lease program, where would they go?
No, exactly, he's exactly right.
Okay, my misunderstanding.
What the key with both the opening and leases, you mentioned, Mr. Johnson, is that it gives you a lot more commercial utility than what you would traditionally expect and what most people envision as a closed-end lease, which is restrictive on miles, restrictive on scratches and dents. This is much more flexible commercial application. So, with regard to the repair question, you can, in fact, take the vehicles anywhere you normally would want to go. What we do with Enterprise is you're simply, you're leveraging off of our size and kind of our pre-negotiated discounts. So, you have the ability to keep all the maintenance within, here within the city of Menefee and preserve that tax revenue. So, you simply just tell us where you want to go, we'll make sure that that shop is on our list. Our only caveat is, as long as it takes a credit card and they have a phone, we can accommodate wherever you want to take them.
So, the maintenance program that you offer with the vehicles allows us to drive them in the Salt Creek Channel and beat them up a little bit?
Absolutely.
Okay, good.
As long as you're not putting it on YouTube is just the general rule of thumb, so.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions about the trucks?
No.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, thank you for being here.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Are there any other questions of staff at this point about this transition? Mr. Leesmeyer?
I just wanted to be clear that I did have some questions prior to the meeting, and I did sit down with Mr. Johnson and went through my questions regarding the funding for some of these positions and how they were being allocated. So, not to say that I did have questions, but they were answered, so I do appreciate that. Mr. Johnson?
All right, thank you. What's your pleasure, gentlemen, on this agenda item? I will entertain a motion, one way or the other.
Motion to go forward and approve.
The motion to approve the recommendations of staff?
The staffing plan, the vehicle leases, and the transitionary expenses.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Mr. Edgerton, would you have a second out there?
If you want a second, item 12.1, on the Community Services Staffing Plan, Vehicle Leases, and Transition Expenses.
No, I'll, I'll go at the council on this. Is it that, is there a disagreement on the council?
No, we're just looking for a second.
You got it for me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edgerton. Roll call vote, please, on approval of staff report as presented.
Thank you. Councilmember August, Councilmember Leesmeyer.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Denver. Councilmember Edgerton.
Aye.
And Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lennox and Mr. Johnson. On to Agenda Item 12.2, Introduction of Ordinance Number 2015-170, Establishing Public Educational and Government Channel Fees for State Video Franchise Holders.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this one falls to me to do a presentation tonight. I don't have a PowerPoint, because frankly, describing cable, television, infrastructure funding sources isn't a very visual medium. You have heard twice before briefings from me, Councilman Leesmeyer, I think, once before, but the balance of the council twice before briefings about this opportunity. The opportunity comes from something called the Digital Infrastructure and Video Competition Act of 2006. That's when cable television franchising was made a statewide issue. One of the things that that act does is it allows local agencies to impose a, what's called a public, educational, and governmental programming charge on the cable operator in an amount of 1% of the cable operator's gross revenues. For order of magnitude purposes, in the city of Menefee, for the last fiscal year, for the '13, '14 fiscal year, that would have amounted to $151,616. And so that's what you're looking at on about an annual basis. These dollars are earmarked dollars. They are dollars that can only be spent on capital facilities, not ongoing operations and maintenance, capital facilities only, for public, educational, and governmental programming infrastructure. So, you're talking about video cameras, video editing material, equipment, if that's needed. You have televisions, obviously, this council chamber functions as a studio, so equipment necessary to get cable casting or broadcasting of one form or another of city council meetings, all of those types of facilities would fall into the PEG-eligible, PEG is short for Public Educational and Governmental, PEG-eligible facility costs. PEG programming, PEG fees are common throughout the state. In fact, they are a product of the Federal Cable Act that was adopted in 1984, and so this mechanism has been used for some time. They are also a known facet of the cable operators' cable television franchise that they've taken from the state. When they sign the franchise with the state, they sign into the state regulatory system, which has specific statutes that allow for the imposition of PEG fees. As a technical matter, but a true matter, the fee is charged to the cable operator. The cable operator owes it. As a practical matter, the cable operator, if other market conditions allow, will pass, typically pass, those fees on to the cable consumer. So, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that to you. I mentioned previously that in this case, the amount, the annual amount is $151,000 per year about, if the ordinance is adopted. It's obviously ultimately a council decision whether to move forward with it. We talked about it at the prior briefings, and that's why we brought it forward to you for your consideration. And I, just a final note, if it's adopted, the second reading would occur in, the second reading would occur on May 20th. The ordinance would become effective 30 days thereafter, which would bring the fee online for the new fiscal year. So, with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions of council? Mr. August?
Is this fee going to be transferred to the cable subscriber, like in terms of 1%?
The answer to that question is, the technical answer is, I don't know, because it is ultimately the cable operator's prerogative whether it chooses to effectively pass that on in the rates that it charges to subscribers. I do want to mention that these days, and be pretty clear about this, these days, people that we think of as cable operator, Take Time Warner, for example, they provide a bundle of services. They do internet and telephone and cable television. And this fee, this portion of the fee, only applies to the cable television portion of that bundle of services. So, if you're paying $30 a month, for example, for your internet, and $15 a month for your cable, I'm sorry, for your television piece, on those $45, there would be no fee.
Do you have any history of how this has been applied by the cable operators to, in other cities?
Yes, I mean, these PEG fees are charged in many, many jurisdictions, and it is routinely the way that jurisdictions identify funding sources to do things like broadcast to city council meetings.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Denver?
The $151,000, how many houses would be involved in that? Do we have like 80, 80,000, 60,000, 40,000 houses?
You know, I don't know the subscriber counts for the cable operators in the city. So, the $151,000 was derived because the city already collects a franchise fee, which is used for general fund purposes, that amounts to 5% of the cable operator's gross revenues. So, in order to figure out what 1% of the gross revenues was, all we had to do is take the franchise fee and divide it by five. So, that's a long-winded way. I apologize for saying, I don't know how many actual, physical subscribers to cable television the city has.
It just seems an unusual number. If you've got 80,000 people in town, and there's two people in a house, that's 40,000. If you take, divide that into the 151, it's about $3 a household per month?
That sounds about right. Another way of getting to the number, I suppose, is to assume that the gross revenues were, are $15 million, or 151,000 times 100, right? $15 million, and then divide by an average cable bill of $100, and then you'd come back to whatever that number is, 15,000 hookups?
With the PEG fee and with technology improving and going in different directions, like you mentioned, online, telephone, digital, et cetera, et cetera, would we be able to, in the future, get creative and add security cameras for code enforcement use, like for anti-graffiti operations, or putting cameras in strategic locations in the city and feed it back into City Hall? I mean, is that a stretch, or is that purely for public broadcasting?
I think we'd have to look at that down the line and look at the specific use that it was put to. If it was sort of a closed-circuit, public safety-only type of mechanism, I think it may be more difficult to get done. On the other hand, if the idea was that you were going to achieve public safety by broadcasting for the world, let's say you put a video camera outside of City Hall and it just showed, you know, the street. If you were broadcasting that on the city's website, it could be, it could fall under the rubric of public programming or governmental programming, so.
It's a stretch, but I wanted to ask.
Yeah, doing the best I can.
Are there any other questions about this item? I know this is something that the councils wanted to have for many, many, well, a couple years now, several, actually, is public broadcasting of the council meetings instead of tape delay. So, it sounds to me like we have a mechanism to get us there. Is there a motion from the council on this item?
So moved.
We have a motion from Mr. Denver. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second by Mr. August. Roll call vote, please, to introduce ordinance number 2015-170.
And I will have to read that title for you. Introduce Ordinance 2015-170, amending Section 5.06020 of the Menefee Municipal Code to Require State Video Franchise Holders Within the City's Boundaries to Pay Fees to Support Public, Educational, and Governmental PEG Channel Facilities Pursuant to the Digital Infrastructure and Video Competition Act of 2006, Public Utilities Code, Subsection 5800, and Schedule for Second Reading and Adoption on May 20, 2015. Mr. Denver, is that your motion? Very good. Roll call vote on that. Councilmember Leesmeyer.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Denver. Councilmember Edgerton.
Aye, is this, this is for the television?
Yes, PEG ordinance, that is correct.
Well, just a comment, this is really, I know the council people, some of them want this, most council people want this, but its primary purpose is to provide better access to the council, so the public has an opportunity to have a better understanding of what's going on. And when I first experienced it in another city where I was counseling, the, it was kind of funny, because a couple of the council people got pretty excited about it, and one of them was insisting that we should have a makeup person to come in and work us over, like they do other television people. It was pretty funny. So, you can get people losing their minds where they should be on this. And most council people, of course, take it as it is, as a responsible act to provide better access for the public. The second thing, though, that I think all of us do, is when you first get on television, on camera, you're going to be very cautious, because you know you're being watched, and it's different, and you'll feel that first time the cameras are on. But all the time, you forget it, and you go back doing dumb things and dumber things and try the camera. So, it will protect the public in the long run and not the council. So, I'm very much for this program. I think it's good for the council, it's good for the public, and I'm glad we're going on it. So, I'm jumping in here.
All right.
And I'll stop right there.
Okay, so I'll record your vote as a yes on that. And Councilmember August. Thank you. That is the unanimous vote in favor, sir.
Aye.
And Mayor Mann?
It's okay.
And there's no camera, thankfully.
Marvelous, good job. Thank you for that staff report, Mr. Melching, long time coming for the city. Give us a mechanism to get there. Agenda Item 12.3, Introduction of Ordinance Number 2015-172, Meeting Change for Parks, Recreation, and Trail Commission.
Mr. Mayor, this is coming to you pursuant to your request of the July no-meeting schedule. There are other resolutions and actions coming to you next time that do not require this complicated of a motion, but this particular public, pardon me, Parks, Recreation, and Trails Commission requires an ordinance to change the times or places or dates of their meeting. So, this particular introduction we're asking for your approval on will allow for that dark in July, but further allow for these to come back to you ever in the future, if needed, with just a resolution the way the others are set up, so the same way as council or planning commission. So, a yes vote on this will bring it back to you for a second reading on May 20th.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Denver. Roll call vote, please, to introduce, after you read it, city clerk.
Yes, a roll call vote on Introduction of Ordinance 2015-172, Meeting Change for Parks, Recreation, and Trails Commission, dates for, and scheduling for second reading and adoption on May 20th. Councilmember Edgerton.
Aye.
Councilmember August. Councilmember Leesmeyer.
Aye.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Denver. And Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to the PRTC for bringing forward those ideas. Thank you, gentlemen, very much. We have two commissioners in the audience tonight. Keep up the good work. Thank you very much. On to city attorney reports. Mr. Melching?
No reports from me, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, just a couple of updated items. Our city clerk needs to do a report out from a conference.
Very briefly, I was privileged to attend the annual city clerks conference toward the end of last month. I did make that conference and found a number of sessions that were very, very helpful and came back with some great material, so thank you for letting me do that.
Thank you. I wanted to publicly thank Lisa Sobek for the Menefee Better Together, Mr. August, and all of the folks here who actually had a part in that, our community services staff, you guys have done a phenomenal job. I want to thank you, Robert, and your team, and Jonathan, and your staff for getting out there, partners like Waste Management and all the other community groups. Unbelievable, third year, it's gone dramatically increased in volunteerism, and that is truly, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned what a community is about earlier, and it's about, in my opinion, people helping people.
people helping people and doing the right thing at the right time. And it's just wonderful that we could get four hundred and some odd folks out in several different locations, helping residents who can't help themselves. I think that's a phenomenal thing that we do. I also want to mention that our International Council Shopping Center Recon is coming up next week in Las Vegas, as where we'll take a group of our economic development folks, and we'll meet with, looks like, right now, between twenty-five and fifty businesses that we want to court, also some land investors that, that are looking to move into our town and, and share the good things about Menifee and continue our commercial retail shopping opportunities. And that will be coming up, I believe, the seventeenth through the twentieth, and we'll all come flying back here and driving back here to come to our council meeting on, on Wednesday night. And then finally, I wanted to mention publicly that there is a planning commissioner opening, and Mr. Leesmeyer's planning commissioner, Mr. Folsom, is, has one meeting left. I believe we're going to be opening that position up for folks who want to apply for that, and you'll see that on the website. We'll do a news release. He is taking a job up north as a city manager, so good luck to Mr. Folsom on that. And with that, I have no other comments.
Can you mention meeting with the Water Board a couple of times to discuss the?
We are actually looking at three different meetings coming up with the Eastern Municipal Water Board. We're trying to check on those, because one of them they gave us was for tomorrow, and I can't find anything on it.
Friday.
Friday, correct. And we can't find when, where, and why their meeting, but they gave us that date and that time. So, we're checking with Mr. Jones, the general manager, and making sure that that's still there. We have two other items coming up. We have a master plan meeting on May eleventh, and that will be held at, Mr. Lennox?
Sun City Civic Association, North Town Hall, six p.m., Monday.
That will be a great one. And finally, we have next, not this coming, board meeting on the eleventh, where we'll be talking about our police services and the new contract that's going to the Board of Supervisors, but the following one, I believe, is on water, or there's a special meeting on water. I'll make sure that council, you have those updated dates and times.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Councilmembers, do we have any future agenda items? Any future requests?
Somebody, I'd like an up. I'd like a update on the fence in Highway seventy-four. I, or maybe, I'd like a summary of it, so that we could decide what we're going to do. To my knowledge, the details have been worked out as to what, who controls it and all, and we have to decide what to do. So, I'd like to bring that to a head, if we possibly can.
Thank you very much, Mr. Denver. Anyone else? I just want to share briefly, in reference to one of the public commenters earlier this evening, Mr. Johnson. You know, with all the things that are going on in this city and have over the last three years almost, and the leadership team that you've assembled, you're doing a marvelous job. And the things that are getting done with your team in place and bringing stuff to the council, so, so we can do some effective policy setting and making the planning commission go, I, for one, on behalf of the council, want to thank you for your professionalism and the job that you're doing for the city of Menifee. We appreciate you. Thank you very kindly.
Do it.
With that being said, if there's no other business, we are adjourned.